Hi Todd, you ready? Everybody ready?
Yeah, ready.
Ready, ready, all right. Morning, good evening. Good evening. I'm going to call the Senator City Council meeting order for July ninth, two thousand twenty. Everyone in attendance, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America.
To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God.
In the name of this world, liberty and justice for all.
Fine, will you lead us in prayer?
Please remain standing for. Father in heaven, father, we bow our heads at this time and give thee thanks for our many blessings. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to gather this evening to look to the affairs of this city. We ask that you bless us that we be able to be mindful of our citizens and. Their rights. We're thankful for the employees that we have in this city that help to provide a vulnerable community in this case. We ask that you watch over those that are unable to attend this evening. And again, father, we're thankful for the opportunity that we have to serve when you say these things humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Roll call, sir.
Cody Miles.
Here.
Darren Warren.
Here.
Josie Reed.
Here.
Keith Higginbotham.
Here.
Justin Cowgar.
Here.
Amy Rochette is not here.
Okay, so firstly, agenda is accepting the city council meeting minutes from June eleventh, twenty twenty four. The hard new drop box and. Make motion to accept those minutes or adopt those minutes. Motion, we have second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, next is acknowledge and receive the water and sewer commission meeting minutes from May twenty first. Land Commission meeting minutes June fourth. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from June third, twenty twenty. I'll make the motion to acknowledge receipt of those. Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, next I'm gonna call Shannon up and she's gonna give her financial report for June.
Good evening. So we're halfway through the year, if you can believe that. Um, we're currently sitting at sixty percent of our revenue and fifty one percent of our expenses. So we're sitting really well for the mid-year. Um, in our street fund, we have seventy percent revenue, thirty, thirty-six percent of expenditures. And also I did have a talk with our billers for the ambulance and let them know that. I kinda just was questioning them on whether or not they were appealing our outstanding AR. And so um, they started doing that and we've actually had an increase of about fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes, if they were doing what?
Appealing the denials that we've been getting, our open AR. Was getting kind of high, so they um, are pushing through appeals and I guess they're processing through, so.
So does that mean we're moving into collections?
Um, no, when, so they're gonna appeal them one to two more times before they send it to collections.
What did we work with on that? Where do they go in collections?
Um, it's ambulance, medical services.
And you have background with this billing, right?
Yeah, I used to work at Blue Shield and I did ambulance billing and hospital billing.
That's what I thought. It's a huge, huge benefit. Thanks.
What, what do you, do pay bills here, like ambulance bill? And they do payment plans? Like, how does that work with our city?
Do they do payment plans?
And they do payment plans. You have to pay off a certain amount of tax. I mean, I've seen a couple of ambulance bills right now. I mean, honestly, the economy's obviously tight, but the first thing I'm not paying for is an ambulance bill over food and water for my family. I just didn't know how we work with.
Um, I'd have to talk to this, the service that we use. I don't know if they do that. Some do, some don't. Some only bill four, to four times and then they push it to collections. Um, I can talk to them and see what their policy is for that.
I think, I mean, I need to know some of that, right?
Okay, yeah, I can definitely find that out. Any questions? Oh, and then I do have Tyler here. He's gonna talk to you guys about our investment.
Good evening. Um, okay, so the investment account, uh, treasury bills is sitting currently at uh, ten point five million, just ten million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty. Um, to be exact. Uh, the average effective yield on that is four point eight eight nine. So it is still going up as some of those first bonds that we bought are rolling off. The forward thinking currently twelve month treasury bills, which is how we're rolling those, are sitting um, below four point eight at the moment. Um, which is still higher than a lot of what banks are having as far as like cedars and stuff like that. So yield is still gonna be really strong, but I think the market's starting to anticipate lowering or um, loosening of uh, financial conditions as we move into next year. Uh, just because the economy does feel kind of tight and I think they're anticipating the Fed will begin to move that way. Um, we did take uh, two hundred thousand out, uh, a little bit over earlier, it's two hundred and one thousand out per Shannon's request. Uh, so the total interest, I just calculated this quickly, over twenty months was seven hundred seventy thousand so far, so.
The two hundred thousand was to be earmarked for.
Rolled back into our budgets right here.
Yeah.
It's part of the budget.
Seven hundred thousand, you said?
Seven seventy, over twenty months.
Thank you for that.
No problem. Any questions?
That would sound like to make motion to accept the financial report for June and also the court report, which is in your drop box. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, next is department reports and uh, under department reports, I wanted to acknowledge uh, new, there's council member here, Cody Miles. He uh, has got online and completed uh, level of municipal training uh, certification. So good, congratulations on that. Good job. Good job. And any of you, you know, it's, it's there online if anybody wants to do it. Keith is probably real close, so. But, and then we have several, it's level two, level one and two and uh, just working at it. So I just wanna acknowledge that. And with that, uh, department reports in there, does anybody have anything else from their department report? Okay, here none. Next is public comment. Uh, you got the timer?
I do.
Okay, so look, this is a little bit on public comment. You like to make uh, public comment to the council? Uh, this is not a question, no, I got you. It's not a question answer session. Uh, we'll hear your comments, you're limited to three minutes. When you come up, please say your name and address. And uh, what you like to say to them. And that includes anything that's on tonight's agenda too. So if you, you have a concern about something on tonight's agenda, this is your point with the time right here, okay? So with that, I will open up public comments. And Teresa, I know she's called me and she, she wanted to talk. But I'm gonna start with you give your name and address.
Just give your name and address to Todd.
I'll just say it to microphone, we'll get it.
Teresa Thompson, I live in Centerton here. Uh, and as Mayor Bill said, I've talked to him about this in the last couple of years and it's not getting any better. I'm tired, hungry and stressed. I don't know how this is gonna come out, but I hope that you will at least be. For the last five nights up until Sunday, I had to listen to fireworks and I'm talking about regular fireworks. I'm talking about ones that sound like him.
What do you live at? You didn't give your address?
Yeah, on Drive, Senator.
What's that?
Yeah.
All right.
One of my neighbors decided to get out there Saturday night and shoot one of the cannon fireworks off thirty feet from my door. I've had to listen to this all week long. I've had it. I've, I've had it. I called the police three times. Now, it seems to me that there's a lot of selfish, self-centered, self-serving people and if that fits you, if it doesn't, I'm sorry. But. This twin does all people, do all people in Centerton not have the same rights? And I don't remember seeing in the constitution where you don't have equal rights unless you're part of the majority. Yeah, that being said, a lot of these people don't care whether babies and children are upset because of all this loud noise. They don't care that the doctor ran away from home in Centerton and Springdale having to pick them up. People with dementia, people with PTSD. I had two people who lived from my street this week. It just uh. There are states that don't allow residential fireworks and this should be one of them. And one of those states is New York. Now, this ordinance has not changed, something's not done about it. My next step is to call the governor.
So just, this isn't a question and answer session, but you're saying no fire, you should recommend no fireworks at all?
Not in residential areas.
Yeah, okay. So I know it's not a question and answer session, what I would say back to you is there's a lot of what you said that like. I too saw a lot of that after the fourth, you know, there was one extra day because of the rain regardless, but then it was like. Another war the next day, but what I will say is I did see, I did see the police officers on, I live on Bliss. I'm sorry, Bliss and Bobland Circle. And I will tell you, there's a couple houses there that were shooting, even when the cop pulled up. I mean, we're blown up and then the officer, keep in mind, when you walk into a group of twenty people, he's just trying to control the situation. Be respectful as he should be, and I saw them handle it very nicely. And it, it goes back to, it's a, it's a couple people. That are respecting. Now, what I will say, I also think that there is a conversation around this and I, I agree, maybe we don't do as many, we do more days than anybody around here. Maybe we shorten it a day. I, I, that's something that I've wanted to, but I, I think our city is doing what they can. It's, you can't control everybody, but you have to monitor the situation too, though.
Well, my objection with mayor here, not only has the situation gotten any better, but the days were increased. That brings to mind, you know, our people being paid off to make the days longer. That upsets me. Well, like I said, yeah, and the first and second of July is not the fourth of July. The fifth and sixth of July is not the fourth of July. When I was growing up, did fireworks one day. Now, I'm gonna say you have to cut it down to one day, but I do say that either take it out of the residential area and do what you want. And I've had it.
Three minutes, Rob. Thanks, thank you. All right, Thomas, you hanging?
Not gonna get any better. Thomas C. Laux, fourteen twenty-one, fourteen. Couple months ago, I said that I was gonna run for city council. I wanna revoke that. I will be running for city council. However, I do reserve the right to vote for the best man or woman for the job. What I wanna talk about was last month I was at coffee. And I had a very uncomfortable conversation with a member of this city council. And the gist of what this member said is that you have no money. You don't have any extra money to do anything extra. And I practically rolled my eyes and it's very frustrating because my first class in high school. In economics, the first five minutes they gave enough, two rules of economics in the first five minutes. And number, rule number one is there's no such thing as a free lunch. Okay, so if you can get over that, you're halfway there. And rule number two is. Your resources won't ever match your expectation. Well, let's remove that. Your wants and desires are always going to exceed your resources. So it comes down to priorities. Okay, and that's what we're talking about. If any of you gave me your visa statement or you gave me your checkbook statement. I could tell you what kind of people you are by observing how you prioritize the money you spend. The same thing goes for the city council. So what I wanna say to the voters of Centerton. I hope that you'll consider the priorities of this council when you vote on November fifth of this year. And what I would like from the city council is for you at some point when the election process starts, tell the people of Centerton that they can trust. That you can be trusted with their money.
Yeah, so again, not a question answer, and we've talked a lot. What I will tell you is I don't know what the statement was behind that. But if you listen to the financials that we just covered, we have almost ten point five million dollars in investments, meaning we have the cash, but we invested it to grow it. We also did not increase tax. We extended a pain tax to put an amenity of a community center out here on Keller, which we, you know, we, we're thinking pickleball courts, pools. We're about to talk about another amenity here in a little bit, but the idea is we need revenue generating businesses. I don't disagree with that, but financially and being a good steward. I don't think we're missing the boat there. I think that we, we.
You're being recorded. Can you tell these people out here that they can trust you?
But what I'm saying is it's a public record. We talk about financials at the top and revenue to expenses every meeting. And I mean, that ten point five million, I don't say it's house money, but I say it's investment money. We've grown almost seven hundred thousand. And that's not like debt, that's, we've invested that. So I don't know what the statement was. I don't know if it was someone up here. I don't know if it's someone not here. What I will say is that is like. I don't agree with that statement, but I've had some good conversations with you. That statement on financials, I don't agree with that. I think we, I think we've been good stewards of financials.
I just wanna say I, I thank you for your service.
No, I get it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? We know your name and address, but go ahead and say it so they have it in the record.
I am Wendy Henson, three sixty-eight North B Street. Um, I spoke to a couple council members privately about this, but I just wanna reiterate. The need for the seniors to be um, acknowledged and a commitment from the city that with the new changes. Um, last year, we were told we will have designated space. Couple weeks ago, we were told that's actually not happening. Um, we will have a shared space. It's a very uncomfortable feeling when you're told one thing and something else changes. So I just asked that when you guys discuss this tonight, that you consider the seniors, well, there may only be two thousand of them. They are part of the voting class here and they wanna be acknowledged. I'm a big part of this. We've been doing this for over a year, twice a week. We have regular attendance. It's increased. I just asked for a commitment from the city to keep us in mind as you make decisions about spaces that are their tax dollars paid for. They pay for schools that their kids obviously are not attending, so they deserve to have a voice in this. So I just speak on behalf of them today and I'm hoping that we will um, look into that and be open-minded about designated space for them. At least having, you know, I understand, after talking to Cody, I understand that there is some need for proving, you know, more attendance and things like that. I get that. But at this point, we do have the mental health aspect, the physical health aspect of these people. And I see it day in and night out in my interactions and I think that should speak for itself. Thank you.
You. Anyone else? Hi Chris.
Evening.
We know who you are, but say your name and address for.
Cody, thirteen twenty-five North Main Street. Uh, first Cody, good job on that interview with the Northwest NWA. Those, you're a solid shout out for the city. Um, and mayor, I'm, I was, one of the things I wanted to note is I was going to ask you about item ten to speak about that. But since you already planned to do, thank you for setting that agenda.
Um, if you have some comments, oh, you need to speak now because there won't be a public comment. It's a public. No, I mean, if you have something you wanna.
The actual facts of what's going forward and I think the public in general needs to hear that in a public.
Yeah, sure, sure.
That's all. The other, I, I would have a question about the crane truck and about the W E R architects. And would it be more appropriate to bring those up? And my questions maybe get answered if I'm with the council. I can just sit back down.
Well, I mean, they're, they're gonna go over the ordinances and WR is gonna make a presentation right here. So try to get your questions answered when they, when they give their presentation.
If not, can I raise my hand?
Yeah. No, I mean, here's your public comment. Now, what's your question on the?
On the crane truck. Um, those are pretty large vehicles, pretty complicated vehicles. Uh, and in some cases, I, I found used ones going for as much as a hundred and fifty thousand. Not my point. They are complicated and large and is the city of Hyphol going to give the city of Centerton any? Re, uh, removal of liability if one of the employees of the city of Hyphol were to be hurt?
That would be actually transferred, title and everything would be transferred to the city of Hyphol.
But are they gonna give us any type of, so that one of their people gets hurt and?
That'll be on lease liability. We release it all and they provide insurance too. We provide the whole thing and in the packet Malcolm might, when he, when we get to him, he'll probably say a little bit about the truck. It's, it's, anyway, it's.
This is a serious society question. We've had the liability, yes.
No, it'll, it'll be transferred ownership to him and our Hyphol and they'll cover all the insurance. Everything won't be ours no longer. I'm not gonna park it there. It's theirs. Okay.
Clear. I don't, I didn't realize what you were saying about calling the police. So it's three different things.
No, no, I, I, I appreciate you sharing that.
Anyone else? We, we know where you live too, but we need you for the record.
Cindy Zunstein, two thirty Town View. I just wanted to address y'all on the remodeling of the city hall. Um, I do agree with Wendy. I feel like the city should commit, uh, make a formal commitment to the seniors. With the space that they are already letting them use um, for designated specific times. That way the seniors don't have to have concerns with that. Their numbers are low, we know that. But um, hopefully it'll grow in the future and then we can come back to the table and maybe look at expansion at that time. You know, it would be nice to have a commitment to the seniors to be allotted a space, specific dates and times. And if they want more additional time, then they can reserve their time when it's available. But for now, it would be nice to see that commitment to the seniors.
And I'm gonna cover that when we get to that item too, so. Anyone else? I saw somebody else stand up back there. We all know you, so we'll need your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kenny Wong Manny and I'm representing uh, Diamond Estate Division. Uh, I'm here today.
Neighborhood?
Diamond Estates.
All right, you said division. I didn't get a timer.
Great, so uh, I have corresponded with Bear Mill. Thank you and the council today. Uh, one of the reasons I brought up uh, by emailing with the city and public works about being safe in the neighborhood where a lot of people are moving to Centerton. Is a sought-after city on the west side of Benning. However, we have people flying down the road and going fast speed, fifty miles an hour, forty-five miles an hour down Walgreen. It's like a dragster speed zone. We wanna prevent any lawsuit with the city liability if anything happened. Example, what happened at Springdale. Right there when a kid got killed. Right now, shit, there's no street signs. We have nine streets in div, in the division and also five streets in Maple Estate. In Maple Estate, they have signs everywhere coming in and exiting all the roads. However, in Diamond Estates, we only have two signs on Seba, Hope and Seba and Walgreen. Uh, like I say, I correspond with Mayor Bill and also Public Works. There's no resolution to it.
Let me, let me respond to you, okay? Because uh, and Anthony responded to you also, my public works director, he's here with us. So yes, on every subdivision in the city, when you enter, there is a speed limit sign and you're right, Hope Street, there's a, only that one way in. And then we put additional signs on Walgreen. There's two going north, two going south. That was, you asked for it, we added signs. Uh, we also indicated the signs that you're mentioning on Maple Estates was actually put in by a developer. You know, C three, when they built that, they put those extra signs in there at their cost. Uh, Mr. Martinez also told you if he wanted the extra signs. HOA could buy them as long as you get with him and buy the proper signs, because they have to be M U T C D uh, compatible. And you know, they'll be happy to put them in there. So uh, I think he's corresponding to you in an email.
Yes, and I, I don't disagree that, like, I agree with what he's saying. What I would, would say is it's about setting the precedent too, you know, if we. If developers put in extra signs and then we buy signs for this subdivision, it's gonna be a dumpster fire. Everybody, every neighborhood's gonna want, I mean, at some point, we gotta manage the city right with the expenses, you know, as a good steward, so I.
Actually, and having said this, I'm saying it's a sought-after neighborhood next to West. And then with the new stadium parking, with street parking and all that coming into effect, during our meeting on June twenty first. I, I've been nominated as the president for the division. I would take notes and minutes from the meeting, so I brought it up. What can we do to prevent this from happening? The goal is to just have signs up. The answer to my experience before is the city works with the division or the homeowners to make it happen. I'm not gonna call the cops. The cops have more thing to do, something important. What's this going to give somebody a parking ticket, correct?
I think that's also an understanding of the residents of the neighborhood, though, being familiar with city process that. Uh, developer may have invested more in this division, division and not this, like, there is an HOA for a reason. Example, let's say they wanted a new fence around a pool, you know.
Yes.
That's a HOA. They want new signs, kids walking, kids run, things like that. Bike trails are coming through. I, I think, you know, at some point, it's gotta be a subdivision decision too.
I think you're, I think you're three minutes.
I appreciate that. It's a quick note on that. I did talk to the investors and builders, they did not buy the signs to put in Maple Estate. So I wanted to clarify that. Unless you have, you have document on that, I'd be happy to bring it back.
Mr. Martinez could help you with that.
What, what's keeping the subdivision from buying them with an HOA? Like, what's, I'm just curious.
That's a great question, Mr. Cowgar. I talked to the owner and the builder, said they did not put the sign. They would, put, the sign was.
I'm saying, what's keeping your subdivision, your HOA from buying the signs?
We brought it up. They said the city was supposed to install that. That's what he told me.
But that's hearsay.
Not me, I'm talking.
I'm saying that's hearsay, like. Probably never even been to a meeting either, you know what I'm saying? Like, let's, 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 like, we can have a conversation in here or at the city hall, but like.
I, I respect the time, but I just say hopefully that we can avoid the parking when doing game days.
Absolutely agree.
I thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. That's most we've had. Anybody else? Come on, yes, sir. I know who you are too, but name and address.
I don't think anybody else does.
No, you're with the American Legion. That gives, that's my guess.
Uh, Sean Henning, I'm with the American Legion Post, uh, seventy-seven in Bentonville. So I don't live in Centerton, but I respect Centerton and we do meet here in Centerton. So I did have some concerns, not concerns, some questions about the, the old city hall building. But primarily, one, I want to invite all of the city council members, the attorneys to our next meeting. It's gonna be August fifth at the old city hall in the community room, six P M. We meet first Monday of every month. Our meal is provided. There is no cost for anybody. You're welcome to come. We are supposed to have some awards and recognitions for our young folks that have earned some awards. About a year plus ago, and there was other members on city council, I had sent off a letter to the city attorney and all the members of city council about meeting with you. On behalf of the American Legion to discuss different options for the old city hall building. And we heard every cricket in the county, but that was the only response. I would again invite a meeting with the city attorney and the city council to go over different ideas. As the American Legion, we help service our veterans and their families and our communities. We have a Freedom Pantry down at the far end of Centerton that we've, our young ones have built and we keep it stocked up as best we can. In addition to the comments about seniors using space, a lot of our veterans are seniors. They don't wanna come out at night for different things, but if we can work together in different aspects, we can get our veterans and our seniors all together. And be more presentable as a whole community. Again, I don't live in Centerton, but we have, we serve Centerton. We serve Bentonville as well. We would love to change our charter to a Bentonville and Centerton or Centerton and Bentonville. Bentonville is very transient, so we don't have a lot of members from there. Uh, most of our members live in Centerton. The uh. I, I'll leave my contact information. It has our post information on the front, my personal information on the back. So it has my phone number and email. Everybody can reach out to me. I am the post commander. I'll know Rodney and you know Bob Anderson, who, both members of our post. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to address.
I believe mayor is.
Yes, I'm one of our officers.
Let me have, let me have the card.
Yes, sir.
We're all a member too. I keep getting membership too.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, public comment is closed. Next. So we will go into ordinance's resolutions uh, at this time. But before we start, would someone like to make a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two and resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two by Title Ollie?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
And Justin Cowgar.
Since we only have one ordinance, I'm not gonna ask to suspend the, because it's only gonna be one, so. Well, he's gonna read it.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Maybe read it. This one's not that long. He can read all that if you want.
A lot of names.
All right. Uh, okay, so our first ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. Uh, this is an ordinance donating an F four fifty crane truck. I believe it's a two thousand and eight. I think I read it in here somewhere. Uh, to the city of, of Hyphol. We, we relinquish ownership from the water, it's from the water sewer department. And we give them full ownership of it. Uh, there is a list uh, issues with the truck. Uh, that Malcolm did uh, provide to us. Malcolm is also on the call via Zoom. Uh, if we have uh. uh, if we have, uh, any questions about it. But, uh, the Water and Sewer Commission, uh, has deemed this to be surplus and, uh, requested that we donate to the city of Hyphel.
And he also gave the list to the Hyphel, so Hyphel's aware.
Yeah, Hyphel's fully aware of this. So, any questions? Malcolm, did I miss anything? Apparently I did not. Okay. So with that, would someone like to make a motion to read? Wait, 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 you gotta read it, read it, we already did.
All right, City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash two-two. An ordinance authorizing the donation of one F four fifty crane truck from the city of Centerton, Arkansas to the city of Hyphel, Arkansas. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the donation on the city's behalf and for other purposes.
So I would like to make a motion to suspend the rule required to read this on three separate occasions.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
And Justin Cowgar.
And would someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two four dash twenty-two? And we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Yes, roll call.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
And Justin Cowgar.
Yes.
Alright, next is, oh, resolution twenty-two four dash twenty. This is an agreement with Stribling for a lease purchase, John Deere wheeled excavator model one ninety G. Uh, this item was, uh, budgeted in the budget, uh, for Public Works. Bringing it to you to go ahead and lease purchase this. Anthony, is there, we have any question? Any questions?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash two zero, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas to enter into an equipment purchase agreement with Stribling Equipment Company LLC, Springdale, Arkansas, for the purchase of a John Deere one ninety G wheeled excavator.
Would like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two four dash twenty.
One more.
A motion, we have.
Second. I'm gonna take them all.
Okay, roll call.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
And Justin Cowgar.
Next is resolution twenty-two four dash twenty-one. This is an agreement with Berron Company, Urban California, for purchase of a GPS system for Centerton Public Works. And you wanna say a word about this?
Uh, the, the reason I went after this, these units, um, besides accountability for all our units, um, is the snow plows and the mowers. Um, all our mowers will be tagged with these, um, and it's to help supervisors help manage the city. Um, so when the snow plows, this system that we're, I'm hoping to, uh, implement, will track where the snow trucks have been, the snow plow, so we know what subdivisions we haven't hit and when we hit. It'll also help for the storm cleanup, such a situation. This is one of those deficiencies I realized we had through this last tornado. And then at the same thing applies for the mowers. Um, it'll help the supervisor to point out sections that we were potentially lacking, missing, or just better schedule the mowers where to go and where to be during the city.
Do employees have work phones?
Not all of them. Some do.
What, who mainly has work phones?
Supervisors. This would be cheaper than the work phones. There's some initial costs upfront, but this is, this is also, you know, and these are other ideas that went after me that I, you know, I wanted the system to help hold every employee accountable for, because this system will track their idle in time, uh, their heart breaking, their speeding. If any, any complaints come in about, um, my vehicle's speeding, then it'd help me address who it was and what time of day and those kinds of things.
Who do they use locally?
Um, I'm not sure on that. Um, the individual that is helping me is local. Um, he owns the company. Um, I don't know who his satellite service goes through. Uh, I can't ask. I can get you that answer, though.
Okay.
So would it be an app on the phone or your iPad?
No, tracker.
Oh, it, it is an app on the phone and the computer.
That would send you on the back.
But you're saying on, on, on.
The supervisor.
No, it's, it, the, the GPS unit sends signals, um, that you, the supervisors can look at their phone or the computer. And I, I could give access to whoever, including the mayor, if he wants to see where the, all the vehicles are at at any time. Um.
Just a one-time payment?
Uh, no, well, there's a monthly fee for the satellite use, but yes, it's, there's one initial upfront cost. And I could choose to lease the units if I want to, or I can purchase them.
Can I make one suggestion? I think we do need this. I think from money and efficiency perspective, one of the largest fleets and companies around here that's around here in Burton Pools and Spas, can, can I, can we make a phone call with them, possibly, and see what they use? Because here's the thing, they do a support smith and up here, and like, they've had really good success with local help. I think we've, I'm kinda hesitant to pay anybody outside of Arkansas at this point, because of what's happened with dude sol- solution software, whatever. That's all I'm saying. If, if it bodes just, I'm totally fine with that too, but I, I.
He, he's, he's, the company's local. It's, he lives in Centerton. No matter what company you use, you're gonna have to pay out of, uh, city for satellite use. But the actual company itself, he is based out of, of Oak Tree subdivision. He started it in Florida, moved here. This is where he retired and he still runs his business.
This'll just be, uh, uh, devices put on each piece of equipment.
Yes.
And it just runs from there.
Anything of value, I mean, everything has value, but substantial value, um, there will be a unit placed on it.
What happens when we sell a vehicle? Will we pull it off and put on the next one, or how's that work?
Say that again.
Like, if you sell a vehicle or donate whatever, one of our old vehicles, how does that, how does that work?
Yes, you can, it's just a plug-in unit. It has an alarm on it that if the employee unplugs the unit, it sets it off to me, or the supervisor's saying that it's been unplugged, uh, just in case they wanna play those games and, you know, disappear or use the vehicle inappropriately.
Darren, do you have any idea what they use in Bentonville?
Uh, the city of Bentonville doesn't have this as far as I know.
Really?
I wanted it on my person, on my, my work vehicle. The reason was is because it's like, what part of town am I for getting to drive around for coding courses? And I wanted something like this for, for my vehicle to be, so I could have myself tracked.
That's exactly what we're using it for.
And because, you know, sometimes you kinda get in a groove, and I drove the same area, and you'd start missing stuff. I wanted to try to make sure I went down every street all the time, so I didn't miss anything. Uh, but as far as I know, Bentonville doesn't, but I wasn't intimate with the street department or intimate with the water department on whether or not they had a tracking system. Of course, the police do, the police department did, but I do not know, I can't tell you yes or no with any other departments in the city had some type of GPS to track where their employees were, their idle time, their speed, that type of stuff.
What are their police departments use? I'm, I'm only asking. I, I think this, I'm just asking, because I mean, I'm trying to think in an efficiency perspective. If there's something they use, it's not just police, maybe we look into it. I don't know.
We use it through our, our in-car cameras, um, and then also,
I'm gonna get those powers.
Um, we also all have, uh, work phones that are provided by the PD, uh, so we have multiple ways of doing all of those things. Vehicles done through our in-car.
Will the employees be notified that tracking system's been put in place?
Absolutely. I, I will announce it at briefing, um, when, when I eventually, hopefully, implement the system. Um, they will be aware. There's nothing to hide. It's, you know, again, it helps them be accountable. Uh, you know, just knowing it's there and we can see it, it'll make them slow down.
It's public knowledge now.
Yeah, it's public media.
I think, I think.
Have your departments on here.
I think it's something that's good. And the other thing too is if, especially like out on the snow, uh, if you have a vehicle that's, like, somebody runs in the ditch and knocks themselves out or whatever, at least somebody's gonna know, this vehicle's been sitting for X amount of time, and you can try to notify them or whatever, and uh, at least with the mowers, there's a group of them out, so if somebody gets hurt, they should be known right away. So it's, it's also a safety, uh, deal also, so.
I've had four units right now on a demo, so you can kinda give me, um, example of what it looks like and everything else. And you gotta think that every hour of idle time is a gallon of gas. That's, you know, three and a half bucks. Um, the first week we implemented, there was over forty hours of ex- excess idle time.
And what a great thing, I'm not telling you, what a great thing to possibly look at putting into like, performance evaluations. Hey, let's look at our idle time and really try to cut that, I mean, it gives you measurable goals, and I think we've challenged Jocelyn on that, like, let's get some goals that are measurable.
Yeah.
Instead of just saying, hey, have a great year, like, maybe that's ways that you can utilize that for performance.
Those things I will, you know, leave up to the superintendent to track their, his, their, his employee, make sure that everybody's being accountable. It's just another tool. Uh, but that's not the reason why I targeted it. It just was one of those benefit perks. There are other things that I can implement, like seatbelt use and everything else. Um, some of the vehicles are limited based on the unit, it's, uh, the, the vehicle itself. Um, because some companies don't put that in there, I forgot what that little plug is called. Um, but that it doesn't read, the, the tracker won't read that, that information to tell them that the seatbelt's off.
Are you gonna go with the two-minute ping grade or the thirty-second?
Thirty-second. Yeah, two minutes is too much. They could be through three streets by that time. And our mowers go thirty miles an hour, so they can be halfway down the road.
Only twenty.
Are you having issues?
What?
Moving through down the states, are you?
You have issues with like, you're, yeah, understanding how people are.
No, no, um, I, I, I technically have.
I shouldn't ask that, that's a loaded question.
No, uh, I have, I don't have i- issues with employees like that. Um, it, it's idle time is one of those things that they really don't think about. They'll pull up to somewhere and leave their truck on, because it's a hundred degrees outside, or it's ten degrees outside, they'll leave it running. Um, and they'll get out and go work and come back. And we've had incidences, you know, and we've had to make corrections with employees. Uh, but again, that wasn't my initial target. Um, one of the biggest issues we had with this limb pickup with the tornado is, hey, have you been by my neighborhood? You know, and, and citizens are, you know, questioning, going, hey, have we been there? Have we done this? And I, I have no proof.
I forgot who's doing our website now. Uh, if there's like a read-only view, man, I feel like this could be helpful, like, when it snows and it's icy and you're trying to figure out when you can get out of your house, and even so I could log on, read only, and understand what streets have been hit on.
And I've, and I've thought about that, and we have, you know, the, the department heads have act, control of our own section of, um, the webpage, so I can add anything, and I had, I had thought about that. Because I actually talked to another Public Works Director, um, at the municipal conference, and that's what they do. They list what streets, and they'll have a map, an inter- interactive map of.
Is it, where's it, I see the company name. Does it say a person needs to be local?
Yeah, his name is Keith Odom.
Any more questions? Alright, counselor?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash two-one, a resolution authorized mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas to enter into an equipment purchase agreement with Berron Company, Urban, for purchase of a GPS system for Centerton Public Works.
And when you make the motion to prove this or adopt this, uh, would someone add a contingency and review the contact by Brian? Brian's already reviewed it once, but he had a couple of concerns with it, so we've sent it back, and they've made the changes. He just hasn't had a chance to, to look at the changes yet. So if he's making a contingency, Brian's approved.
I'll make that motion with the contingent.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second.
Second by Cody. Roll call, sir.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowgar.
Yes.
Okay, next is resolution twenty-two four dash twenty-two. Uh, this is an agreement with W E R Architects to, uh, for services for our community center project. Little brief history on this, and then I've got, uh, W E R here to make a presentation to you. I asked them to come and, uh, you know, go over their proposal review. I think their full request for qualifications is in Dropbox. I've, I've put it in there for you to look at. But, uh, I think I've indicated a meeting or two ago that we had seventeen different firms applying for this. Uh, and I've asked all my department heads to look at them, and we whittled it down or narrowed it down to eleven different firms. Uh, we interviewed all eleven. Uh, and we, we interviewed them all here in person, and we narrowed it down to three. And then we've met again, and, uh, W is our, W E R is the one that we, uh, we chose. A lot of it's due because they had a lot of experience with community centers in, in Arkansas and other locations. And at that point, I'm, I'm gonna introduce John and Christie, and they will come up and I've, I got a, they're gonna do a PowerPoint presentation. I hope they come, yeah, look them up there. Okay. They're gonna kinda tell us what they're gonna do for us.
I hand out as well here.
Oh, yeah, give it, give them all.
Yes.
Everybody up here, and then the clerk, and then the lawyer. He likes, he likes paper.
Mine's like color on it.
He wants his in black and white, sorry. Well, when you, you want me to change sides, just let me know.
Sir. Um, well, thank you so much for having us here. We're very, very excited. As the mayor said, we had a very extensive selection process that the city went through, and, and we're just thrilled to be here in front of you as the recommended firm, uh, and recommended team. And so, I'm John Langen with, uh, uh, the, the design team.
Christine Beatty.
And, um, so, so our, our, our team is comprised of local, uh, engineering consultants, um, and also special, specialty consultants for this type of project, you know, having aquatics component, which is a very highly specialized type of type of, uh, component to our project, so. Waters Edge, also Ballard Key. Um, and we'd like to just give you a brief overview of what we presented to the selection committee and, uh, what we're proposing for, uh, moving forward with your project. Uh, next slide. Uh, so to talk a little bit about expertise, uh, as the mayor mentioned, uh, next slide, um, we have, uh, uh, a, a lot of community center experience between our team, W E R Architects and SAP Design Architects. Um, and, uh, and we work in this way, um, with specialized architect on, 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 on many projects. And, um, so, uh, just a handful of projects here. Um, many for, um, communities just like Centerton that are maybe not growing quite as fast as Centerton, Centerton's, I, I notice is maybe one of the top ten fastest-growing communities in this, in this region, which is incredible. Um, and then, uh, next slide, so.
And on that, so rec center experience in general, that, that is a very strong focus of ours. Uh, and where we really see the rec center experience thrive, within a community like yours that's on the cusp of you don't rely on other communities necessarily to support yourself. You're, you're beginning to develop an identity and a reputation, and a community center begins to develop that heart. It becomes the center of Centerton. That's where we see our focus and our expertise really, uh, developing a community, um, into, uh, into this kind of thriving entity. So go ahead and get, skip one. Um, so we also have rec center experience, is what we're just saying. I'm gonna say those terms interchangeably, community center, rec center. A community center is not a community center of the days of old, it was an event center. It is a thriving fusion facility that is active and moving and changing all the time. So then why do we show you library experience? Because though, that as an amenity is serving your community. It's a civic amenity that's gonna improve your quality of your life. Uh, so we bring that experience as well. Go ahead, next slide. Um, also outdoor sports and recreation, uh, that's a really important component to think about, uh, because you're not just developing a building, uh, you're developing an idea. Uh, and that needs to branch into your next slide, which is, uh, master planning. No community should be advancing on the development of a community center without a master plan of either the campus or even thinking about how the city functions, uh, with that amenity in place. So we're always thinking about master planning. And we'll be master planning your site, your campus, and also the building for future expansion. The day you move in, there's gonna be a demand for more. So we wanna make sure that we don't get in the way of that. Of course, indoor aquatics, our team's bringing indoor aquatics to the, uh, to the solution here. Uh, we're not sure how that's gonna pan out necessarily, but we wanna make sure that you know we do have the expertise to implement that into a rec center. And of course, outdoor aquatics. And, and slash paths as well. And again, that will be as we, and actually, you're gonna talk about this a little bit, but as, as you, uh, visit with your community and learn more about what they're looking for, we'll be able to narrow down what exactly is gonna be in the facility.
Yeah, so to talk about really the project process, uh, for, for this project. Um, we, we work from the inside out. We start with your needs, the needs of the community, listening to, listening to the community, listening to the operations, all aspects of, of, of what, you know, the people are gonna use this rec center, because, uh, as Christie mentioned, it's used by the entire, uh, entire community. So, next slide, so to talk a little about community engagement, having, having forums, having, uh, sessions with the community, what they, we hear what, you know, needs of, of, of what they would like to see in the, for the community center. Next slide, um, so visualization, and so this is. Next slide, um so visualization. And so this is something that we're really able to do in a way, if you scan this QR code with your phone, um you know, you'll be, uh if you'd like to, it's a, it's you'll be uh full site. So so it's it's something we really like to do to be able to provide links, provide information that you can share on Facebook or or how, you know, however you, newsletters, however you'd like to, so people can really understand as the process is progressing. What, how the how the designs, designs being shaped.
Really important aspect of visualization is, you know, we are very technical people. We think and see what the buildings are gonna look like before they ever end up on paper. Well, our clients have to trust that that you can see what we're seeing. Um what we found is it's much better if we can just show you. You can walk through the building we've ever broken ground. So that is really powerful. That way you can actually have buy-in into what we're doing, or you can say, no, that's not working for us. And and we can modify it before it ever got built.
Next slide, um uh another thing, another very critical component is the uh operations feasibility of the project. So thinking through, how's the center gonna operate? How how does the design uh mold around that operational plan? Um you know, how 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 do we design this in a way that reduces staff needs, you know, where one person can see multiple, you know, uh multiple activities, multiple things going on. Um and then also looking at the demographics and and the community that serves uh a- around around the rec center. Slide. Um and so we take all these things into consideration and into the design. So, you know, all all these things shape the design of of the rec center, and and that's how, that's that's how we work. We don't just come up with a an idea and then, you know, we we work with you, work with the community to develop that idea together uh in units.
But you have to be able to operate it. It's gotta be able to meet the needs of the budget. It is taxpayer dollars and they're gonna hold you accountable. So we wanna make sure that you're have all the pieces and parts in place, so you know what to expect, and the community knows what to expect for you as well.
And so with the development of the next slide of the operations plans.
Sorry, just, yeah, little touchy.
So, um so so we we think through all 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 aspects of that, you know, expenditure, revenues, hours of operation. You know, how's the community center? These are projects that um have have a lot of wear and tear, you know, the entire community uses them. So we design them with durability and and with uh, you know, we designed to last, you know, and and that's a uh a- and as we're doing that, we're, you know, thinking about and and designing it around how how the buildings get operated. Next slide.
Yeah, so your budget cost control. This is important to us. And again, this goes back to our team and how we wanna work with you. There is always a construction cost, and then there's expenses. When we look at the bottom line, we know that you have limited funds, so we always start with the bottom our amount and work our way back up. And that tells us how much is left for construction. Then we work within the construction budget. We're not trying to push design, and we keep using that term, but but it's not about us. It's about making sure at the end of the day, that box at the bottom has been achieved. We haven't gone over that number. So um when we're putting together your budget cost control um during the during the design phase, um that's what we're watching, and we're working with you to identify the other project costs.
Um and 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 so so how do we achieve that budget? And it's really through uh process that's uh very precise with 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 how how we work, how we uh control the quality of of the documents, uh the regular page turns through uh uh flash text that makes me with our consultants. Um and then we're also your advocate throughout the entire construction process. So we work, you know, we're here till from 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 now until until the until the uh, you know, keys are are handed over and 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 even a year after for 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 warranty bucks. So um so we are your advocate through throughout the entire process. Next slide.
So we just did a few exercises. Um by the way, this is a uh prime rib presentation cooked in a microwave. So we are going really fast, but we spent a lot more time working on this. I just want you guys to know that as we're flying through this conferences for your time. Um when we started uh learning about Centerton and what you guys were about to embark on, we we were so excited. We sat down, we started sketching some ideas and thinking about um a- as you start to look at this community center, this rec center, what are some things you need to be thinking about? And what do we wanna make sure that we don't forget to bring to the table? Uh so we developed diagrams, uh like the thinking ahead diagram. Again, we talked about master planning and future expansion. Um so knowing if you would end up with community rooms, you may want more community rooms. Where can you place them on that site, on that building that allows you to expand easily? Uh and the same with the gymnasium and fitness. Can you leave room for a second gym in the future? As you look at aquatics, aquatics are a three month revenue generating machine. There's nine months when it sits empty, so remember that. So what can you do to maybe uh extend that shoulder season, season? Uh maybe a splash pad can add an element like that. So we're thinking about that. Uh that might wanna come to the front of the building, so that you get a little bit more eye candy right in front. Uh and then utilizing every uh control point uh in your building to uh maintain good security and access for the public as well. And that's what the next slide is actually. A little zoom in on that um maximum supervision of your access points with minimal labor. Uh labor's one of your highest expenses in a rec center. So we wanna be thinking about that. And then are there opportunities to take your lobby space and actually use that as a breakout community element uh for a community room? And then, once you get past that control point, maybe uh that's the line between um more of the uh accessible areas in the back of the building, uh keeping restrooms up front as well to serve the community rooms. Uh and then, of course, as John was saying, safety and durability. These buildings are going to be used heavily, so your materials must be able to hold up to that. But your systems also, uh you know, those systems, they don't last forever, but what can we do to extend the life of them and minimize maintenance? If we're talking about aquatics, um separating structure, mechanical systems is absolutely critical. And knowing how to follow that through and looking for that during construction to make sure the contractors met that need to. And then smart organization on your site. Uh you know, you're gonna end up a lot of parking, so is there opportunity to borrow that parking for different amenities? You might have some outdoor amenities, and then, of course, the community center itself. Um or even placing a playground or a pump track up front or somewhere where your parking can uh serve double duty, and that way you're not having to provide as much parking um that maybe sits empty most of the time. Um and then if you ended up with, you know, if there was room for baseball, softball, pickleball, courts, whatever, can you provide a single control point with concessions in one location that could serve uh multiple fields? Of course. Um and then, of course, we were looking at access to the schools, could it's an opportunity to create walkable access to the site from the school also. So if that's the case, what are the amenities that wanna be up front? What are the amenities you wanna tuck in the back? That's just how we're thinking right now, but all of that is in the vacuum. We haven't gotten to meet with the community yet. We haven't gotten to hear from you guys fully, so that's the next step.
Yeah, so so really to kind of wrap it up, just our promise to use city council into the end of the city of Centerton, it's just that you're fully equipped, have the expertise, we have, we have the team of consultants that's ready to take on this project. We're very, very excited about that. Uh we're we're a very user friendly group. Uh so we, um that's kind of funny term maybe for a for a presentation like this, but uh but we are we're we we approach these projects from how do we best serve you as as the client? Um we know it's your money, uh and and we uh we make decisions around budget and about how to help you maximize maximize your dollar on these projects. Um uh we're we're local, we have that local understanding of the market. Uh and uh and and really, we wanna build a a great relationship with with the city through this process and uh and make this a a great community center for the city of Centerton. That questions.
Listen, you asked about this, the R F Q is in the drop.
I found it, yeah.
This one's not, this is something they just compiled for me just like right before we got here.
This was it, this was the presentation that we gave you?
Yeah, no, this is what you gave me. It's the initial request for qualification I put in there for them to have to. It's in the Dropbox.
Really fast, sorry.
No, I I think it'd be nice to understand what what are next steps look like. The only thing I would say is just going through that makes me really think, how do we, how do we take a step back and think about all the pump tracks that are over there near it? Like, how do we think bike trails connecting to this at some point? We're gonna have to get there. Um this is not on you guys, but this is a question just because some historical experience we've had with architects, what here later. Is it fifteen? I mean, did I calculate that right? Sixteen percent of the total price is what you guys are compensated for, and then anything ad hoc outside of it? I was looking at eight and a half and six and a half percent or something. I don't know if that's that was, what's the fee, I guess?
Yeah, so so the 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 base fee is uh uh seven and a half percent for new construction. But side landscapes, uh uh an additional uh percent, so eight and a half, just on the site landscape portion, just because so many consultants but not added together, no. Definitely not added together.
So it's, so it's, so on the front end, it's eight and a half percent of what the expenditure of the project is?
Uh of 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 the construction cost, but it's uh seven and a half percent of of the construction cost excluding side landscape. That's the eight and a half percent.
On an average project, what's the, I mean, I again, this is just from historical experience. I think we've heard it tonight. What's the average percent of a project that that you guys are? I guess compensate for, because I mean, it's public record, we can, anybody.
Oh, yeah.
The state of Arkansas actually publishes.
Yeah, and 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 it's it's right in line with exactly that that percentage that that we we have on this project.
Eight and a half percent.
For the side landscape.
Total project, what's the percentage thing?
It's seven and a half, it's, I'm sorry, seven and a half for everything excluding side landscape, eight and a half for side landscape.
Sixteen percent?
No, 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 no. I know. So pull those apart. So so when we get the um instruction budget from the contractor, there's a schedule values and the line, the line item for like for site work is is a separate line item. So you take that line item, that's eight and a half. Everything else is the seven and a half, so it's not added together.
No, and and and
We have a a toll right now, not until.
Well, I mean, understanding, and here's why I ask, here's where it's come from. We have had a terrible experience with some local architect. I mean, nickel and dime, it's like Legion Airlines almost. Uh you know, a phone call, this, like
Right.
I don't wanna put the citizens in that space. I don't know what the decision was to choose uh as you went to the process, but like, that's what I feel like has been a challenge here. And again, great, glad you're here. I think that's the first step. We want somebody with pool. Um yeah, and and I love that you have Missouri, Carl Junction, like I have some friends that, but like that's where we've been killed in the city is ridiculous nickel and dime fees. And and so I just don't want that to look at this, you know, in the name like, man, our budget was actually not what we wanted, and once you start, you can't stop. And that's what I'm worried about.
Uh in 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 our response, we listed about fifteen to twenty references. Um we, I'd encourage you to call every single one of them if you'd like and and ask, ask them because we do not nickel and dime clients for for we we we
I'd ask questions.
Absolutely, no, I I I totally understand it. And we try to set a fee on the front end that we don't have to do. You know, I mean, I mean, because I I know what you're talking about, because the when fees are set, I certain it's space on the front end, and you, and then a lot of stuff's left out. That's not, that's not.
And the same part is like on expenditure budget wise. I mean, I think this is gonna go into greater conversation. What do we do with the ten and a half million investments? Because I don't know what the rate is on our investment versus this penny tax, because is there, do we pay chunked down to be more fiscally responsible? But I I definitely would like to know, is payment to the architect piece is that on the front end, halfway through, midway? Like, what does that look like?
Is that what?
It goes in progress payments, right?
Yes.
Yeah, progress payments, just like these buildings were too.
That that that's right, that's right.
Same with the construction, it goes in progress payments.
And and they're all, they're also uh services, like I'm the specialty consultants that those aren't defined yet. So like, for instance, are we gonna have one size pool, are we gonna have, we're gonna have two pools, we're gonna have a splash pad in? You know, and so so what we're trying to do is is um define those, define those, but but uh you know, present you with a a a contract where we're not doing what you're talking.
And the next step is probably finding a contractor that can be involved from the beginning with you all and us, correct? Is that kind of where we would be next? That's what we talked, okay.
Yes, yeah.
And and that's what we talked about. I think that's
And I will tell you, I just, I just came from K W A a little while ago. They're doing a special Thursday on the storms up here today. S- uh for the mayor's myself there, and I talked to Mayor Orman, because they did the city event, you know, and she said they were very pleased with with their work. She she was very pleased with it.
No, I I have no doubts. The local piece is like half the battle right there, but the the fees have just killed us here. I mean, it's nothing on you guys. It's I'm like, I'm sorry, ask those questions, you know, because we're we're next, you know, like, oh, we're gonna charge you two hundred fifty bucks for this, and it adds up. I mean, after. So I look forward to working with you.
Within the contract here, it says you'll be leading the competitive bidding phase, right?
We we will, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it depends on your project delivery method, but uh we are right there with you. We, uh part of our services include bidding and negotiations.
Okay.
So we put out the construction documents, we help manage the pre-bid meeting, we issue the addendums. Um and then the bid opening as well. We answer all the questions that come in during bidding.
Right, and and you say you'll be part of it every step of the way, right? So I looked at the services provided. It says onsite project representation not provided. So how often will you be represented?
Yeah, so.
Uh actually charges.
So so the onsite project representation is like if we had a person physically in the construction trailer a hundred percent of the time.
Yeah.
Um but we we only usually do that if it's an extremely complex renovation, for instance, where the contractor needs to ask questions on a daily basis. Because uh otherwise, it's really not a, it's not a benefit to to the owner to have to pay for something like that. So so for this, we um it's an average of two site visits per per month. We also certify the payment applications on a monthly basis. Um and that that's not just us, that's, you know, we represent a pretty large team of architects and consultants. So, you know, that's also for for our consultants as well, to be able to have have them onsite. Um and 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 we think
I hope it's somebody local for all set for, I mean, I just do, I have
Yeah.
But uh, yeah, I think that's a good question, Cody.
I want to add in on Cody's question, though, because when we built these, you know, we did the same thing. We had the architect design it, and then we put out the bids for construction manager, and actually they helped us through the interview process. And and then when we got down to the nitty gritty, we was able to work together and value engineered this, because this came in over six million dollars, and we got it, one point seven, so we value engineered it down. That I don't know what's happening here, but that that's certainly what happened with these buildings.
Yeah, and like Christie was saying, that's why cost and budget slide that we showed, we look at the budget holistically. You know, we're not just looking at the construction budget. We're looking at soft costs, you know? I mean, there's a lot that goes into buildings that's not attached, you know, and 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 these kind of centers have a lot of, you know, for, whether it be furniture, equipment. You know, we build out budgets for those and and we calculate those on the front end, so that it's good, because our goal is is, then when we get to construction documents, we have such a firm grasp on what the what the budget is, the total budget, that, you know, we, you know, hope to avoid a huge type of, you know, where we have to come in and try to figure out what, well, what's, what what's in and what's not.
One thing that I'm, I'm the one that is the one that usually is the one that everybody doesn't necessarily agree with. But sure. Pictures are pretty. I'm looking, if it's not that fancy, can we put some of that fancy back on the inside, more plain chain on the outside? I mean, it's nice to see a fancy building, but what good is the fancy when to the eye is taken away from something on the inside? I would like to see
I think that's just a mock.
Well, I know, but I mean.
Meaning for, don't judge a book by its cover.
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, it, as far as I'm concerned, it could be a block building on the outside and have more fancy stuff.
We heard that when we showed the concept too. They said there was too much glass, so we, and and we're not gonna do all that.
Well, I think some of this, I think some of this conversation for me personally is gonna go into the next agenda topic, but I wanna bring back full circle wide, did ask y'all a question. Roofing business, I think we're all dealing with it right now with storms through here. And the whole, let's start at the bottom, you know, what insurance says they're gonna pay as an example, and work our way back. We see how that works. You know, you're getting a broker, next thing you know, they're marketing it up to get the price and hitting that number, so they can get every bit of it, but it may only cost thirteen thousand. You know what I'm saying? So trying to be fiscal, fiscal responsible. So nothing against you guys, just wanna reiterate, but Keith, I agree. Positively, and and resource wise, but I mean, we're gonna have to hear about amenities anyway, pickleball courts, pools, inside, outside, splash pads. Senior center, you know, I think that's an option to talk about down the road. Do we? Because if you talk about community gathering in the pool and being a cash cow three times a year, then I think about senior centers, which I haven't been great and vocal about, but like a room, water, aerobics, things like that, better. I mean, that's just, it kind of pulls it all together, so.
Well, I think that work comes to community input as well. Just, I mean, how many meetings do you think? Could there be meetings during the day and during the evening hours, just so that we can get more citizens to come in and give us their feed, their input?
And the way to do that is to have a variety of of meetings, so not just a community forum, not just it on on Thursday nights, but also waiting till schools back in. Uh we get a little more family involvement when we, when we're uh having community forums during school. Um, but also having stakeholder sessions or even open houses, those are different types of community events. That allow people to come and go, some people don't wanna go sit in a gymnasium for forty.
I think engagement, pulling people into meetings, as you can see, is pretty tou- pretty tough, when you have as many citizens as we do, right?
Yeah, and people are busy, so if we can give them an opportunity, uh, launching a page on your website that gives them, uh, frequently asked questions.
There, so we put on the water bill, hey, we see, we're seeking your input.
Website.
Website and fill out, I mean, that's the way to use it.
With, uh, we've done that with surveys, we put the link to the survey on the water bill.
And that's the thing, you know, that's.
People read the damn water bill, that's what they're always pissed about, alright? Stop here, no rate increase, give your choice and input, we want you.
That's one thing that we discussed, uh, back when we first started, uh, talking about doing this, was we were gonna have, uh. Lots of meetings for input, and, uh, I think, you know, there are some people that work nights. Uh, there's some people that, you know, can't come to meetings during the evenings and stuff, so.
I also think it's about being efficient, that wouldn't be twenty thousand meetings, I mean, but, give them some, say, pick ten meetings, here's your choice, you know?
Uh, right, but I'm saying that, you know, and there's, once you have a meeting, uh, I remember. It's been several years ago, uh, we had a, I think it was a master, a master development plan.
Yeah, three, three and a half years ago.
And there was no, it was longer than that, and, and we had, had. People don't realize that. It's all fine and dandy to say, we want this, but will it fit? In here, you know, and will it fit the cost, and it's not just to benefit one person. It's to benefit the majority of the, now we're here in twenty four thousand that we've got in the city, so.
You'll get your bad mint and pour, Keith.
That can be anywhere in some, anybody's backyard.
Hey, and if you go, I would just say, thank you for being local, but if you all have not just ideas, looking at numbers and analytically, everybody can look at analytic and find something, but like. If you guys have suggestions on the area or what you're seeing trend wise, cause when I look at libraries, yeah, five years, I get it, COVID inside, you know, things like that, it could evolve a little bit, like. Call them out, cause I think we wanna kinda get ahead too, right, we don't wanna be the, oh, we, we brought a solution, and now, and people aren't doing this.
Didn't cut that slide out, the trends.
Yeah.
We wanna cut out, but yes, we will do that, we do, bring to use trends that are happening, and you need to be aware of, uh, in the nation, you know, what's growing, what's not, and then also regionally. Uh, what's your competition doing?
You can do a Carl Junction, Missouri community center, I think it'd be. That's our project, I was looking.
That is probably the R F Q there.
It's, it's nice, no.
Yeah, it's in there, okay, I figured it's in there.
Yeah, that is a, uh, that's a parks department, a city department, uh, senior center combined, in fact, we work very closely with the senior center. To, uh, everyone will Pizza Hut, and so they, uh, we were able to create a space for them, that they were actually able to, um. Use in the evenings for an event space, for wedding receptions, things like that.
Call me crazy, but I've said, people could bring twenty bucks, hundred bucks, whatever we want, and you can buy brick, and it goes on the sidewalk when the building's built.
Oh, right.
Well, we, we wanna do that, you know.
That's a great way, I mean, they did.
Yeah, I've already mentioned it too.
Mentioned that too.
Yeah, we already mentioned it, we just have to come up with.
Put your stamp on history, and people will get something out of it, right, when they get something out of it, they wanna involve more, so.
Yeah, no, we wanna get cost, and I've already, when I've interviewed you, I've talked to that.
Maybe that'll offset those ad hoc fees at times, you know, celebrate, pay for it, service.
So, one last question, out of the seventeen, what to the panel, Mayor Bill, made them stand out? I mean, and obviously experience with community centers and local.
The number, you know, being local, we, we had three, three great companies apply, one, I didn't have no Arkansas tie, so we. We liked his work, but he just wasn't here, the other one was a local company, and then this one, or these folks, uh, just a lot of communities, and then, like I said, I, I've talked to. You know, I, I see some of the designs, and, uh, we all just kinda liked their qualifications, wasn't just me, there were like seven of us that looked at it together. You made the final decision.
I love how on some of them, they were specific though, Cody, I know you're a financial guy, I forgot which one it was, it was about, maybe it was Carl Junction. Thinking to be like efficient with energy usage, I don't know which one, but like, nowadays, that's big sustainability, energy usage, we're in the prime of it. You know, around here that they want, so I think those are things to think about too, financially, that, that save money, but standing out is important for sure.
Any more questions, anything else?
I wanna say something.
Say ten or twenty years down the line, what's next, you're gonna be maybe a bad repairer and used, that kinda thing, what this center can do at that point?
That's, that's the contract builder, I don't like that be an architect question though, unfortunately, yeah.
I think they do look.
They're local, that's all that matters, let's just be thankful for that, we're not dealing with somebody in Canada, for gosh sakes. Just saying.
But I mean, they did mention quality materials, so I would think that they would be.
Yes, part of the operations is knowing that when you open the doors, that's not the last, well, for one, that's not the last time you're gonna see us. Uh, but also, uh, that you need to be thinking about that fifteen to twenty years down the line, where's your sinking fund? Everything needs to be maintained or replaced, how are you measuring, that, that's your operations plan, and we'll talk lots about that.
Last question, I swear, is there a clause in there, just because of what we've been through the last two years?
There is, there is not, uh, however, uh, current, I mean, so first off, we're not done figuring out the contract.
Yeah, no, we're not, that's why I'm asking before I vote.
Contention too.
Uh, so, yeah, there's, there's, uh, we're, a- and they're using standard language, I mean, i- 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 if that is a. Some certain deal, you wanna add into that, we can do that and, and, and force them to do it, I don't know if they will.
No, I don't know about forcing, but I just, gosh. Eh, heck of a year, I guess is what I would say, does anybody else have any comments on that, I mean, with a couple of things we've signed up, but they're local, thank goodness, I'm, I trust.
Right.
I have a good feel, we've had a lot of challenges with a- agreements, so I just, I don't know if there's.
I, I think your best bet is, like they mentioned, ask, ask the references, because I mean, no, I, this, some could be legitimate unexpected costs. Down the road, may not, you know, you know, I don't, we can anticipate that, and I don't know if we can contract around that necessarily.
Oh, yeah, we, oh, you guys read it first, we've got no more questions, anybody have any more questions? Any more questions?
And again, gotta be contingent.
Yeah, contingent on Brian's, cause we got the, maybe changes, we just Brian has to review it.
And Alan too, I think, uh, Alan's got some.
Yeah, Alan and Brian are looking at it together.
All right, resolution number two thousand twenty four dash two two, a resolution authorized the Marion City Clerk. As representatives of the City of Centerton, Arkansas, to enter into a, how do you guys pronounce it, weird?
W E R.
W E R.
I'll answer it either.
Okay, yeah, W E R Architects, Fayetteville, Arkansas, for Architect Services for the Community Center Project for the City of Centerton.
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty two, continue on Brian's approval of the contract.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have second?
Second.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Pete Higginbottom?
Yes, sir.
And Justin Cawker?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be in touch as soon as he reviews it.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I love the primer bit of microwave analogy.
Yes, it's great.
I'll use that on my next one, I wrote it down.
We'll start. All right, hey, Nicole, I'll bring Nicole, uh, Dave Mars, you still there?
Oh, my gosh, I didn't even know.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, this next item, uh, is discussion of the old city hall building, which is now called center, it's now says center in the hall, like, don't say city hall. Yeah, we had a lot of confusion, and folks thinking it was the city hall, so we took the word city off it, uh, so, uh. Dave has, has spoke to me and Nicole, and he spoke to us several times on this building, like to remodel it into a. Little bit of a retail space, but also a community gathering space, what you see on your screen, is a rendering, these are not the official plans, these are just sketch, you know. Concept right now, he will design the, you know, have Dave Burris, architect, design these at his cost, and then, uh. We'll submit him for, for review and comments, but, uh, this is what the front of the building looks like, the inside, uh. You know, basically, and, and I'll, I'll let Dave correct me if I'm wrong here, you know, over here in the. In the corner, some of you's been in that building before, Lorraine, you should sit in this area over here, over, and, and they wanna make that into a sharing library. There'll be some chairs there, table, then this, you know, rows of books like all the way around this thing, uh, just to up the screen, it'd be two shops right there. Um, and then over here is another, just a little gathering space, over here were my pointers, I'll know if y'all see it, I guess you do, it shows up good. Uh, I asked Dave, cause the seniors, you know, we want to, right now, they are meeting in their community room twice a week. Uh, and Tuesdays and Thursdays there, uh, and I, I've talked to Lori, who actually won, uh. He does a lot of it, uh, over there, and, and Wendy too, and we're concerned was the seniors setting up the tables, you know, up and down, up and down, cause you know, they are, are getting older, and. They only have one man, it was at the, at the meeting I went to, uh, not too long ago, so, what we'd like to do is take this space right here. Leave dedicated tables in there, I asked Dave to, right here where my cursor is, to add a wall right here, you know, close this in, make a wall. He was agreeable to that, but he'll say he'd like to leave a door, cause they like to be able to load and unload here in this garage back here, we do have some files here, but we like to. Articulate all that off where the files are, so nobody has access to them, but, you know, have this door in here so they can bring things through it. Uh, but when the seniors are meeting, or, you know, the American Legion mentioned, uh, maybe sharing space and stuff, they can use this all they want, this is, uh. You know, this is not gonna be a space for rent, uh, this community rooms will still be in existence like we do now, with birthday parties, weddings, different things like that. Uh, but this, this will be, like I said, you know, ma- mainly for the seniors, uh. At one point, I thought maybe we go up to the door and just let the general public use it, but I, with all these other spaces, I don't really see a need for that, so I think we can leave this dedicated for the seniors. And, uh, and for Sean and, and his group, if they wanna, you know, co-mingle, again, they'll have.
Veterans?
Yeah, veterans, and they'll have twenty-four hour access to it, we'll change this door right here, this is a, a combination lock on this door, we'll change to a glass door. Uh, there's a parking lot in the back sidewalk right at the front of this building, so we can get in, if, if anybody has any issues, you know. Handicap accessible, we'll still have these doors in the front, we'll have handicap parking, and they can come in, one of these doors probably has a push button on it, they can walk through and come back here too, so. We wanna accommodate everybody and, uh, you know, t- take care of our seniors too, again, uh, during the week, this room is not used at all. Uh, so the seniors would also still have access to the kitchen area back here, if they wanna use the kitchen, and they make coffee back there and things, and, uh. Nicole, did I leave anything on this, or Dave, did I leave anything out?
No, not from now, I think you, you got it pretty good there.
But you might kinda talk to him a little bit more about what you wanna do with, you know, up the street and everything, just kinda give the council an idea of what we're looking, or what you're looking at.
If he's able to, right?
Oh, well, he, he can talk, he just can't disclose the name of what he's doing.
Well, I can, I can do some of it, but yeah, so, thank you guys for, you know, hearing me out on this, this is something that I've been talking with. Well, Mayor Bill and Nicole, and, well, Lorraine, really anyone that will listen to try to get, you know, just to try to do anything we can with. Main Street Centerton, um, so the, the idea with this is kind of a, a similar idea that, um. Uh, we did with the mercantile across the street, really just kinda bringing the building, at least the looks of it back to what it was, so. Um, knowing that this was the old fire station, um, just kinda going, going in with Dave Burris, we, we had the idea of, let's, you know. Let's do a brick facade on this, let's, you know, if we need to do the red fire engine, red doors on the front, just something that really makes it. Look like, you know, a Centerton fire station, and not necessarily like the building currently looks. Um, and so, uh, you know, we, we've been talking about this, again, like I said, for the past. I don't know, I think I did these plans with Dave, what, Bill, a year, year and a half ago, so this is something that, that has been kinda. On, on the table for a while, and, um, I know Bill's main concern, um. This entire time has been that we have a space for, for the seniors, we have a space for the American Legion, we have a space for the birthday parties, and. You know, and then hopefully on the front, we do a space that, you know, can be somewhat of a community space, like the little library, sharing library. And then have something for those seniors, for the American Legion, and for the community, for the people that leave our mercantile. Where, when they, they come in and ask, okay, what do we do next, we have somewhere to send them next, like, and so, I have, w- we have. We've pitched the ideas, you know, many ideas of what those retail spaces could be. I think at the end of the day, I'm in agreement with the city council, we gotta have some revenue generating businesses here, that we can keep people here, that we're not sending them. To Bentonville after they leave the mercantile, and so, you know, I mean, right now, I just reached out to my store manager. Um, at, at the, the mercantile, we have on average about a hundred and twenty people a day that are coming into the mercantile store. And eighty percent of them are from out of town and out of state, and so I just, I, again, like, right now, if, if you look at the recommendations. That we have on restaurants, on things to go do, unfortunately, a lot of them aren't in Centerton, just because. Uh, w- well, I, I, I wanna be able to send them across the street, and so, um, the, the. The problem with this building though, as many of the other buildings down there, is it's in, you know, a flood plain and a floodway. Um, and so we're very limited on what we can do, um, we had actually talked with Pizzeria Ruby and some other bigger restaurants, um. About the, you know, the potential of being able to go in there, but we're limited to about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of. You know, the valuation of this property that we can spend, so, um, doing, doing the community spaces, doing the library, a lot of that is. You know, it's, it's low impact, it's not putting in big ansel hoods, it's not, it's not building out commercial kitchens, and so it's something that we can, that we can do. Um, we have a, a coffee and tea shop in that, that corner that we're looking at, um, it's a, the Sami Coffee and Tea, they have a, they have a location. Out in Gentry now, and would love to be in Centerton, um, I have no monetary interest in that, I, if you guys, someone else has a better idea, great. Uh, I'm just wanting to get businesses there, so, we are also, we're trying to do this where we can have more of a big announcement, um. With, you know, doing several things on Main Street Centerton, and so. Um, Jenny and I pitched the idea to, to HGTV about, hey, if we got, if we were able to get. Four or five businesses, um, you know, on, on our main street across from the mercantile, that, that we. Made part of the show, is that something that you would got, you guys would be interested in doing, you know, like a four or five episode special on, and. I couldn't believe it, but they're, they are, they're very interested in that, so, so we've, I've got the building two doors down, um. From two doors to the north on three sev- seventy-six North Main, that's closing. Well, I, I'm out of the country, it may have already closed, it's supposed to close today or tomorrow, but that, we'll have that, and then. That's going to be converted into a Cuban restaurant, um, which will, you know, something. Uh, just something to keep people here, um, we're going through the drawings, we've got the funding for that, and then that, that was gonna be on the show as well. Um, I also own the Mary Maitrein Building at the other end, next to Casey's, and. I'm very limited by that one as well, just because it is also in the flood plain, so, um. But, you know, putting a new foundation into that, um, making it into a small ice cream gelato shop, um. Or, you know, I mean, we, we've looked at a bakery, we've looked at several other things, so, um, but. In, in all, doing all of this together with the city, um, at the same time where we, we come together and we do. You know, some murals, we do, we do some, uh, you know, the city building, we do a library, we do a, a restaurant, we do, uh. Family spaces for, you know, that, that could be coffee, or, or could be ice cream, and just do it all at once, and then. You know, the goal being to highlight this on national television, so it only enhances and, you know, brings, brings more people to our, our great area. So that's kinda the, I don't know, that's the ten thousand foot view of it, uh, but. I'm, I'm trying to think, did I miss anything on that bill that, that I was supposed to say? Sorry, it's, it's two in the morning where I'm at, so I'm, I'm looking through my notes, trying to make sure I caught everything here.
Well, I think you got it, Nicole, did he, did we miss anything?
I can't think of anything you guys.
Nicole said in with these two, and HGTV's already been out here and looked at it a couple times, uh, and, uh, they, they seem pretty excited about this also.
Yep.
And again, it seems like a good use of building, and, yeah, like he said, the, the two, right, the two shop spaces are not really picked yet. You know, uh, and actually Mayor Orman shared something with me, how to, how we can pick those, so, cause they have a coffee shop inside the Bentonville library. I asked her, how do you do that, and she, she sent me information on that, so, you know, at some point, whenever we get to that point, but like he said. But like he said, it's pretty low impact, uh, I mean, it will be.
Yeah, and so what I, what, what Bill and I had talked about and what I had recommended, I, the, the stuff, the Aziz drawings and the stuff through Burris, um, I, I just, Jenny and I paid for that in the hopes of, you know, getting this project going, so there's no expense there. Um, Bill had talked to me that, that last year there was, there was, or maybe this year, there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for, you know, you know, for the improvement or for the, the renovation of that building, I'm not, and, and if I'm speaking out of turn, please let me know. But basically what I, I had thought would be a good plan for, for the city was, hey, put that money into the facade, into creating, you know, the white box of the, of the areas, and then whatever, whatever businesses come in, they pay for the build out, then they pay lease and bring revenue back to the city. And then if they move out, it's just the same thing, we just, just move someone else back in there and into those spaces. So, uh, you know, that's, that was kind of the, that was our plan, um, you know, that we thought we could bring to you guys and hope that we could, you know, move this, move this forward, because at this point, if we say yes now, the city then still have to go through all of the FEMA applications, the floodplain certification. So it's a process to get going, but our hope is that this is something that we can start filming later this fall, where it would air, oh, March, April timeframe of next year. So, um, and, and, you know, I, I would like to have as much done as possible, you know, by the time this stuff airs, because there are, there are people coming, but, um, you know, the, with our experience with, you know, the last three years, we've done the, the hometown takeover and that, it, it's a, it's a huge boost to a city, um, with just, you, there's a lot of people that will come and visit these kind of things.
Anybody got any questions for Dave?
Yeah, we need to get the state to fix Main Street to support.
I don't have questions for Dave, but for Wendy and the gentleman from the American Legion, I know, I heard mentioning of, you know, area for senior citizens, area for the American Legion, is this area kind of the size of what y'all are looking for?
That's not big enough for Legion.
I think it will be, I mean, as of now, you know, I, I feel like it's, it may be a little cramped.
Can we handle that one offline? I mean, it's two AM where he's at right now.
Yeah, no, and, and, you know, and I've talked to him, you know, we wanted, when we was going to Remilz anyway, it's about the same area. But I also did indicate to, to the seniors, when we move out of that community room, they can probably have that space too.
I'm just concerned with the usage of this space. I mean, library, that's sixteen by twelve.
I really understand the library in that building.
We're gonna talk to Community Center later, like Ken, I mean, so today we're just saying, hey, we, let's move forward in the process of FEMA permits and then we can talk about the Community Center, right?
I guess what we're looking for today is a commitment, you know, commit, commit, commit to, to earmark the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, which Dave did talk to me, he thought maybe he can get some sponsorship for some of this, so we probably won't be out a lot, all of it, but we want to earmark it just in case.
Again, I think this is the part, do we look at some of the ten and a half million we have in investments too, that, that's using it?
We, we can absorb the two fifty in the.
Right, right, no, I get it.
No, we, we can absorb the two fifty in the, in the general.
Yeah. Cool.
And can we talk a little bit about, cause more, you know, to Cody's point, that space does look a little bit small, um, so is there something, you know, contingent?
And if it's not going to be, and then the other spaces, if it's not fitting the, the size and need of the Legion and seniors, I mean, it, Legion doesn't seem like it's laid out very good for.
Legion uses the community, they, they use that whole community room.
Well, you were talking that being for.
He, he mentioned it when he came up for public copy.
Either way.
So Legion would need the bigger room.
But I think we're saying we want to move forward with it, like, do we, it's two AM where he's at, let him get, discuss that.
I don't have a problem earmarking the money, I just want to make sure that, you know, once we get, say, the Community Center built, we can probably get some space there for the senior citizens. But in the meantime, you know, that, that gap between now and then.
Plenty of time though, cause I mean, we still gotta get the FEMA permits, have plenty of time to file for it.
And then, you know, American Legion can use, uh, the other space, then that's plenty of space there too, versus just putting them in that one little area there.
Still got the, hey Sean, you still got that place over in Rogers at the nonprofits? Okay, so you have office space there, right?
We have an office space that we benefit the use of the building because we're a tenant.
Okay.
But we've all talked, we'd rather move it here.
And, and I mean, Bill, like, you know, as, as we've talked about before, you guys, if, if the, if the one space up in the corner that may or may not become a coffee and tea shop, if, if that's, if that's all that, that is your, you know, leasable space for revenue back to the city, that's fine, really, I was gonna say, um, the, the sizes of all of these rooms, I mean, if you want that whole other half to be library, I, it really means nothing to me. It's like, like you guys were mentioning, the, but what means a lot is just getting something going on this, because it's just been sitting there and nothing is happening on that Main Street, and we gotta have some spark to get, to get other developers and to get people to come down here.
Sure. I think, so at this point, I think we're saying, let's move forward, we talk with the Community Center, we don't need to talk about the bones right now, it's, I mean, he's right, get it going, right?
Yeah, so I guess we need to make the commitment to move forward with it and earmark the two fifty.
I'll make the.
That's all we're doing is earmarking the two.
That's exactly right.
Thing to do with these plans.
Oh, right, yeah.
No, he's, and these are, these are a concept.
Really rough draft.
This is the concept, and he just said he can, and he told me that himself.
Well, it could be.
Perfect.
Yeah, so.
To be done, something to us so.
I'll make the motion to, to move forward with that.
Okay, yeah, no motion, we have a second?
Second?
All right, let's do a real call.
You bet.
Do it just.
Cody Mott?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Pete Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
And Justin Calvin?
Yes.
All right.
Now, in the city hall, like, discussion on the seniors and Legion, like, I mean, I think that's a question of the future, but there's just, sure, I mean, at some point we gotta revitalize that area too, and I think we gotta figure out how we balance use.
And like I said, and like I said, their group, you know, and they said theirself is small. And when we move that community room, they can, that's a lot bigger and they can just, they can set up all the time, it's a large room there.
Yeah, I just don't want to, I just don't want to build a room and lock it down for a hundred people and wait for it to come when we do need a revenue generating business there, and I think as we get this Community Center, we need to look at, do we have a big library, meeting rooms for them like Bentonville does?
Yeah.
That'd be great, where they can entertain and serve and.
Yeah, we can have it in both locations, that, I mean, works good for me.
And, and I mean, down the road, you know, maybe we look at possible transit of how we pick some of these, I, I don't know, I think there's a limitless opportunity.
So we'll move forward with this. All right, thanks, Dave.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, next I'm gonna bring up Jamie with Waste Management, he's gonna ask you for money too. I don't know if I can zoom in on that, can I zoom in a minute? Wait a minute, hold on, I gotta zoom in.
Good, Mayor, Council?
Oh, I'm Jamie Vernon with Waste Management. So I'm here to request our annual price increase for the, uh, residential waste and recycle services. Um, the, the price increases factored using the Consumer Price Index, um, for the water, sewer, trash. Um, in the contract where it allows our price increase, it, it, it shows that it's factored by taking the twelve month average of the prior year and the twelve month average of the year before that and subtracting those two years. And so that came out to a point five nine percent increase for twenty twenty-four.
Fifty-nine cents?
So.
What was it?
Point five nine percent.
Fifty-nine cents or fifty-nine, well.
It's a point five nine percent increase. So in twenty twenty-three, your, uh, rate for trash was twelve dollars and fifteen cents and your rate for recycling was two dollars and sixty cents. And that will increase your trash rate by seven cents to twelve twenty-two and your recycle rate by one cent to two sixty-one.
Oh, okay.
Uh, you need to, uh, have your city attorney on the back for, for that contract.
Good job, city attorney. So, so you're asking for eight cent increase?
Eight cents, yes.
Eight cents is what it is, I thought it bet fifty-five cents, okay.
I, listen, everything you called on was a real call, but can I just censure with Waste Management, can we have some conversation with these trucks that are driving through neighborhoods? It is ridiculous how fast they're driving. And I mean, when you call somebody, it's like, well, let me forge you to this personally, I don't know how you hold it, but it's, it's getting like, pretty dangerous. Kids in the road.
Absolutely, so when that happens, um, if you could let us know, we do have DPS on all of our vehicles, now like, as you guys just discussed, we can track all of their speed, we can track speed between homes and, and going down the road. So if, if you have a specific instance.
Maybe when they come, yeah, I can do that, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, I can leave contact information, uh, Mayor, my contact information as well.
It, it just goes back to the thing I was mentioning earlier, neighborhoods with car speed, I mean, the trucks, when it's only like one pickup day or, you know, or they skip, it, it's pretty dangerous.
Sure, no, and, and I happy to look into that.
Questions for Jamie?
Well, since we're, you're here, the biggest, the biggest complaint that I hear is the broken containers and getting them replaced. I've heard people say that they call down there and, and they can't get ahold of anybody to, uh, put in a request for a, I know I see the trailer going up and down the streets every once in a while with, with new containers, uh, but there is, I mean, you can drive up and down the road, anytime when it's, when the containers are out, you can see the busted up containers all over now. Um, and I was told it's mainly because the hitch or the picks it up aren't adjusted correctly and they just crush them whenever they pick them up. And you can see, uh, both of mine are missing the little deal on the front, but they don't even use that anymore, it's just, it's just, you know, pick it up and, but I, I would just say, come out sometime and just drive the streets of Centerton and look at how many containers are crushed. That are cracked and, and are gaping holes in them and, and, uh.
Maybe on the bill they put something that says, hey, if you need a container, call this number, uh, it's as simple as that.
There's also, you can also do it online, if you're gonna go in, and, and I, and I, I think a lot of people don't realize that you have to call or make that request. Um, and, and that's right, I mean, they, they do break them, and then there are certain times of the year when it gets real hot, those cans have been out there for a long time, like.
When it's cold, no, when it's cold, it's really bad, they're really conventional.
They, they don't call Waste Management, they call me.
And then Bill should.
Every time they contact me.
Um, you know what, I'll talk with our ops team and see if there's maybe an audit or something that we can do, um, you know, that's on, in the next couple of months.
Yeah, a new guy named John, he's doing a real good job, so.
Yeah.
Group, is that his name? John Group?
And maybe we can do something like that, so.
The other, the other thing is, is you can drive after they, they've gone and the containers are laying down, sometimes they're all over and the lid is in the road and people are just running over the lid as they go by and.
Okay, that's.
That's, yeah.
Oh, don't do that.
So are these the fees that the residents pay?
They are, yes.
Okay, so you're taking the resident fees a point five nine percent, the usage. Is the usage increase based upon our population increase or usage increase per household?
So the percent increase is based on the, uh, the household rate, um, and we determine the use of the CPI index. Um, so, uh, billed individually, so it's not necessarily billed on the, the number of households. So one of the, one of the good things, uh, with us billing individually, they have our, our contact information, we're able to keep track of the residents as they come in and out, they close it up on their accounts, so it works out a lot better that way as some of our cities where we just, where we bill directly and it's based just on house count. That answered your question.
Yeah, so, just to get, just to get the, the final cost, it's eight cents and that's per month, and we get billed on a quarterly, so it's, it's twenty-four cents that your bill will be going, going up per quarter.
That's correct, sorry.
Let me ask you a question though, cause you did, and you didn't answer me, but you said this is effective eight one, but you already billed for the quarter, so how's this gonna, is it gonna be proactive to next?
What we're going to do is, since we missed, we're, we're gonna prorate it and we're gonna add sixteen cents to the next quarter's bill.
Okay.
Um, if it was a large amount, I probably would be wary of doing that, um, but we'll, we'll do that since it's just sixteen cents. Say just.
I'll reach out to him, I'll, I'll answer that.
Well, that's why I wanted to nail it down as to how much it was gonna be per bill, because if you say per month, we don't get a bill per month, it's per quarter, so every three months, and that'll, that'll give an, an idea of what the people are gonna see. And, and with the price of fuel, I mean, everybody should expect with the fuel prices going up, that, you know, everything's gonna go up, so.
That's correct, and, and the C, the latest CPI number for water, sewer, trash is five point three percent. And so most of our communities have been getting that five point three percent increase, so that's why kudos to the attorney, you know, put that language in.
Good job, Brian. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did you pay him to say that?
Eh, eh, every once in a while, people.
Wanted us to say that on the record, didn't he? I did.
Already there.
Does he, does he represent you first?
No, no. I think that, that's for you.
Wasn't that long ago, the Centerton citizens were, were laying bags out on the side of the road.
Well, and our trash was parked for that long. Our trash was being picked up with a horse trailer pulled behind a pickup.
Well, thank you.
What do we need to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the increase in price.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
A little second in.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? He said no, okay, he said no, all right, thank you.
For your time, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next is acknowledge and receive.
Precious.
Acknowledge and receive the water and sewer audit. So we just need acknowledge and receive, it's there in the Dropbox for you.
I make that motion to acknowledge the receipt of audit.
Second.
She had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, um, next is, hang on, I gotta zoom in.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, Amy, you know, she's not here tonight, she has relocated to Gravit. She has moved, so she is now a resident of Gravit, which in turn, uh, she had to resign her seat from the city council, so she has written me a letter, resigned her seat. And then we need to accept her resignation and also declare vacancy. And what I'll do to, to fill the vacancies like we did last time, we will put the applications out. Uh, we'll put them on our website tomorrow and the next day, and I, I have a deadline, I, I think it's like a week before the council meeting, I'll, I'll stick it online here.
We're gonna contact any individual?
We'll contact them all. Yeah, we'll email everyone, I, I accidentally sent one to Cody too, who had a group email, so, yeah, well, it's okay, Cody. I had a group email with them all in there, so no, I'll, I, I plan. No, I, I planned on, then what I'll do, like I did last time, is as I get applications, I'll put a folder inside Dropbox and you all can start looking at it, if, if we get. And that'll be a term that expires in December, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Hey, speaking of, okay, speaking of, is it, do we have to? I'll bring up this, this on Cody, never mind.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so they can make motion to accept her resignation.
Accept her resignation.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, now we're done with the business, what are we gonna ask, Justin?
Well, we needed to.
Oh, I thought we did it all in one motion.
No, you didn't.
You did two last time.
All right, all right, so is I make.
I'll make a motion to declare vacancy.
All right, we got a motion, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we're done with this.
Do we, so, nevermind, actually, I don't need to ask that.
Do we have any other business?
Any updates on, uh, two things, park impact fees, what's the holdup there? Or, I'm sorry, what?
It's not a holdup, they provided the information too.
Well, yeah, and I know, like, last time, I know Anthony had mentioned that he'd get all the stuff in, like, where are we at in the process? Who, whose, whose turn is it, Bill?
Uh, I believe it just turned, or did Cody, did you turn yours in now? And, and we were waiting on Matt and, and so I think it's all turned in, they're figuring it up.
So what's our line, when, when do we plan how that done?
He, he was hoping to have it all done by the end of the year, last he told you.
Yeah, all we gotta do is turn the, I mean, the, the investment in and stuff from, from Matt and like the future plans, but like.
I'll, I'll have to get you an update, I don't know what, what's all involved with that.
I'm saying, like, I, I mean, can we shoot to not wait eight months to get that done, like, here's the thing, time's money at this point, I mean, it work.
I'll get you an update, I, Anthony already left, so I don't, he, he would have the update.
And then dude's software, I know we talked about it last month, we can talk about that offline, I don't know if we have an update on contract.
This man right there has an update.
I remember the folks, uh, was standing, I think that, uh, Kayla sent me a list of things today, which I'm going to address and send a man letter to them on. Uh, being a public speaker, I don't want to say anything more. Being in a public meeting, I don't wanna say anything more.
All right, thank you, counselor.
Any other business?
We'll leave it at that then. Wait for an update when you can.
And I'll, and I'll give it, Anthony, I'll email you on the impact fee.
And here's why, as a reminder, what that does is, on the size of the house. An impact fee from the resident, it will help fund our parks, new equipment, things like that.
Absolutely.
And they benefit, many benefit from the equipment right now and I'm thankful they don't have to pay for, you know, right now, but as people, I think that's important for the city. Other people have done it, makes a lot of money. I mean, I, I estimate eight hundred to a million and a half first few years after talking with Anthony, but like. It shouldn't take a year just to.
Back in, back in the park, right?
We gotta fill it out and submit it, like, let's, let's try to lock it down so we can start twenty twenty-five with a strong.
Okay, all right. So with that, call for you to mayor is July twentieth. Not this Saturday, but next Saturday, at nine o'clock at the Centerton Hall, Community Center. Nine AM, hope you can make it. And with that, we're starting to make motion to adjourn. And we got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you oppose, if you oppose, you can say.